The Work Session of April 10, 2017, of the Portsmouth City Council of the Order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons? Dr. Whitaker?
President.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And ladies and gentlemen, Councilwoman Simmons sent an email just before the start of this. She has a client that's overseas that's had a death in the family. So this is an emergency. She's got to get him back. And that takes working with the State Department. So that's what she's doing. Dr. Pat?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, two weeks ago today, I presented the FY 2018 proposed budget as required by the city manager in the City Council/City Manager form of government. Over this time period, the budget team has met daily with key partners and briefed some of the members of City Council on the FY 2018 budget. Tonight, we will continue reviewing the FY 2018 proposed budget, focusing on answering first the city's Council's key questions from the March 28 public work session. Those questions will be aligned in the presentations tonight that will be presented. And then the key strategic budget areas for presentation tonight are employee compensation, presented by Ms. Elizabeth Gooden, Human Resources Director; realignment of fees and rates, presented by Mr. Brian Casey, Budget Officer; and fund balance and financial policy review, Mrs. Alice Kelly, Chief Financial Officer. Before we begin the presentations, I will review the questions raised by the members of City Council and the topic areas in which the questions will be answered. In addition, I will answer -- the questions and answers have been uploaded in your box so you can see the answers there in front of you. Under Employee Compensation section, the questions are thusly you asked for us to come back: provide an estimate of what the .5 percent will cost; what is the total cost of the $500 employee bonus; what is the cost for our department heads, the $500 bonus? Under Revenue Sources, Realignment, and Fee Rates, you asked to provide a chart which compares our proposed fees and tax rates to other municipalities. You have an handout, and that's in the box. The next area will be Fund Balance Financial Policies. What is the cost to provide retirees a half of the proposed general wage increase, GWI? Under Unrestricted Net Positions, Public Utilities, and Waste Management, provide a breakdown of how these funds will be used; also provide an explanation of reasons for future automatic increases; and then the use of fund balance, impact of use. Under Other Questions, of which I will answer myself, that were not in one of those areas, the question was, what was the funding calculation for support to civic organizations? There is not a funding calculation used in the awards to support to civic organizations. The city has an application process where organizations submit an application providing the detailed description of their programs and verification of their 501(c)(3) status. The Support to Civic Organization Budget Review Team, led by Mrs. Grobina Young, who is our Grants Budget Specialist, receives the applications and leads the process. The second, can CDBG funds be used to support Meals on Wheels program? The answer is CDBG funds can be used for Meals on Wheels program to support administrative costs only. There can be no use of those funds for purchasing of food. However, with the uncertainty of the federal funding for CDBG, we proposed for the funding to go through the Support to Civic Organizations. And thirdly, a chart showing the number of constitutional officers and employees and funding sources. That chart is in front of you for your review. Mrs. Gooden will now speak with us on employee compensation. Yes, Dr.?
Yeah. I noticed, Dr. Pat, in the questions and issues, I had asked about the $5.8 million general fund and what amounts we could pull from there. I believe there's a cutoff in the general fund as far as what needs to be in there.
Use of fund balance, $5.8 million, impact of use?
Right.
Yes.
Well, the question I was raising the last time was if we were to go above that amount.
What would be the impact?
Right. Is there some type of statutory limitation?
Mrs. Kelly will speak on that in her presentation, Dr. Whitaker.
Okay.
Mrs. Gooden.
You won't speak on that anyway. Thanks, Doc.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council. As the city managers indicated, my presentation tonight will focus on a proposed compensation for city employees. Our fiscal year 2018 budget includes a general wage increase of 2.5 percent for general employees who are hired on or before January 1, 2017. One of the questions from City Council was, how much do the half percent represent? A half percent is equivalent to $129,000 for the general fund. In addition to the general wage increase, we are proposing a net $500 bonus for general and public safety employees who were also hired on or before January 1, 2017. They would receive that in December of 2017. One of your questions was, how much did it cost for us to fund the proposed employee bonus? We've allocated $1.1 million for that. I believe the last question was, the cost to provide department heads with the net $500 bonus? That will cost $13,498. The cost for department heads is $13,498.
You went through the count fast. Can you go back? I got, you said $129,000 for?
She'll go back through all of it again. Start again.
From the very beginning?
Were you giving the figures?
Sure.
Take your time.
Okay. The half a percent for the general wage increase, that half a percent is equivalent to $129,000.
The general fund?
Yes, sir. For the general fund.
I guess that wasn't really the question.
Question, okay.
Because at that rate, what you're telling me is the whole 2.5 percent?
It's not the $400,000.
Yeah. It's not even half a million dollars. I just find that hard to believe.
Mrs. Kelly, could you speak to it?
You have to remember, though, for the general fund employees, the majority of general fund employees are public safety. So when Ms. Gooden is telling you a number, she's telling you for everything except for the public safety employees. So it's just the general fund employees, which I want to say is about 600 employees.
Probably about 600.
Employees. Excluding public.
So you're saying public safety isn't included in this figure?
No.
This 2.5 increase doesn't include public safety?
$645,000. You're saying the 2.5 percent raised on the cost, $645,000?
I'm just saying that that's just for the general employees. When I get further down in the presentation, I'm going to speak a little bit more about public safety.
Public safety are not in that number.
I get that.
Okay.
So how many employees does that include, when you exclude public safety?
When you exclude public safety, I would say about 600, approximately about 600 employees. About 600.
We could get the exact number.
But I can give the exact number. We can get back to you on that.
It just seems off a low to me.
We can get the exact number and validate that figure.
Yeah. I'd like to see that math.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So are you saying that the 2.5 general wage increase will only be an impact of $645,000 on the general fund budget?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
And it may not be 600. All right. You got the question.
For the employee bonus, again, using the same eligibility criteria, then this is going to cover our general and our public safety employees. Again, they have to be hired on or before January 1 of 2017. We've allocated $1.1 million for the proposed employee bonus.
Keep in mind, netting screen excludes the constitutional offices.
Any questions?
All right. Go ahead.
Living wage. One of the other areas that we were proposing to cover in this budget is our living wage. Our living wage, although we haven't set a threshold for a actual set?
Yeah. I did have a question. You mentioned earlier that the .5 increase, that covers about 600 employees. And then when you add in public safety, that was another 600?
No, sir. Public safety is going to be approximately about 420, about 410, 420. Keep in mind, this excludes employees of constitutional officers.
Okay. So the $500 bonus excludes?
It excludes the employees of constitutional officers.
Okay.
So it's going to be for our, you know, city employees excluding constitutional officers.
That total was?
She said that she didn't know the exact, it was 600, but she would get that, will get that figure for you.
The total cost, again, for the bonus.
For the bonus? $1.1 million.
$1.1 million. And you could do everybody, you could do everybody for another $15,000.
Oh, for the, including the department heads?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Department heads. I'm talking, everybody for the, for $15,000, $15,000, you can do the rest in employees. You can do everybody.
What do you mean, everybody?
Every employee.
Every city employee?
Oh, yeah. She just, you just said you had, you excluded department heads, and it was like 14,000?
There are 17 department heads.
$14,000.
Right.
How many people above them do you have? There's only a few, a couple of you.
Yeah, you're just?
So $15,000, everybody can get $500.
That's right. And that's what you asked, and we brought that, we're bringing that figure back.
So give it to everybody. If you're going to give it to them, if you're going to give it.
My question is on, if you're saying there's 600 employees that are under the general fund plus another 420 public safety, is that what you, is that?
I'm sorry, I can't, sorry.
600, you said there's 600 general wage employees, and then you have another 420 public safety. And so all of them will be included in the $500 bonus?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So when you multiply that by 500, that should come to 1.1 million?
It's a, it's a net $500 bonus. So it's actually, I think, the total cost. Mrs. Kelly?
$840 for them to get?
$834 or $833 per employee. And we used 1,250 employees for the general fund to come up with the 1,088,000, whatever change it is. We assume that we have a certain, a certain number of employees as of January 1. You do have some turnover and that type of thing. So yes, $15,000. I think we don't even need to change the budget if we wanted to provide it for department heads. It's there.
I'm talking department heads, appointees.
Well, no.
Why you can't give?
We have included all of that.
Why you can't give it to, for $15,000? Because, you know, I understand what you're doing with giving it to the employees, but people, somebody's running the ship too, in all these departments. And we shouldn't exclude, totally exclude them because they're running the ship.
We would have to come back with that figure because if we're looking at all constitutional officers.
No, 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 I didn't say that.
Or who you say?
I said appointees, people who work for us, appointees.
Oh, appointees.
City attorneys.
Oh, city attorneys. Okay. All right.
Appointees, city attorney, city clerk, city assessor.
Right.
I'm not talking about the constitutional officers.
Okay.
Just be clear.
Right.
Just the people who are city employees all the time, not just when you give them money.
All right, then you follow. We follow you now. Okay.
That can't be, that was five or six of them.
No.
So it can't be more than $2,000.
That's right. And all appointees.
Appointees, deputies, your deputies, your?
All right.
But the math still isn't adding up to the 1.1 million. That's when you take the 600 plus the 420 and multiply by the eight, it was a gross amount, 800?
We use 1,250, general fund employees, for the bonus. So it was 1,250 times 834, I think it was, for the taxes.
That's why, where is the 1,250 coming from? Because you said there was 600 and then 420 public safety. That's coming out to 1,020.
We really need to get the exact number of employees.
I know the 1,250, but I'm not quite sure about the general fund and the exact number for that.
We'll break it down and get it to you. Okay? And maybe we'll get it to you before the night is over.
Clear on the request?
Yes.
Clear, Mar?
Yes.
Yes.
You said appointees. I was thinking you were thinking about?
They're not appointees, they're elected.
Right, okay. All right, go on, Mrs.
Okay. Currently, one of the things we're also looking to do in our fiscal year 2018 budget is to provide a, it's okay, is to actually provide an additional flat amount to those employees who are currently making less than $30,000. This chart represents the additional compensation that they would receive based upon years in their current position. The total increase that those employees would receive, to include the general wage along with this flat dollar amount for the living wage, the average increase would be about 8.3 percent.
What was the basis that you used to determine that these amounts would move persons up to a living wage?
We didn't, explain it this way, sir. We didn't establish a living wage, per se. We came up with a $30,000 threshold, basically just looking at everything with, you know, which would normally pay for housing. To actually set a living wage in accordance with how it's currently done, we would have to take in a lot of other factors. We just thought about $30,000 in comparison to pretty much what some of other local cities was pretty much a good estimate for.
So we don't know if this would still bring persons up to a living wage or not?
No, sir, we do not. What we're trying to do with the budget is really just make a good faith effort to get our compensation up for some of our lower employees. Our lowest full-time employees that we have, we have some full-time employees that are making $17,794 in comparison, full-time.
That's 216.
Yeah. Well, because if you're going to talk about that's a living wage adjustment, it has to be some basis of what you're basing a living wage on before you can call it a living wage adjustment. I just want to present something that's not an actual living wage adjustment.
But as we had brought and discussed over the past, even when we first started the conversation, before we even got to budgeted, we talked about and discussed employees in municipal government who are not making $30,000. That was the original presentations back months. And then when we started with the budget, we again said, we would look at the employees. We were asked how many employees, and we indicated it was 216. And then we would look in this budget to see, while we could not bring everybody up to $30,000 of this group, and that was our threshold that we discussed, we would begin and try to look at as years go forward, to continue to bring these employees who are at that amount in some way closer to the 30,000. And in what we're doing now, we are bringing some, and she'll present it through the scatter plot at the 30,000 mark. So that is some gain for some in this group. And it's right at about 43 of the 216 that will be at $30,000.
And these are full-time?
All of these are full-time employees, and some have worked 20-plus years and are still below the 30,000 threshold.
I think we still need a plan, though, even, you know, I'm sure they'll be very appreciative, but if we're talking living wage, what's, where do we want to be in three years? And at what point in time, how long is it going to take to get them off of the poverty level, if you may? But something needs to be in writing. I agree with that. You know, they shouldn't have to think that council, depending on the makeup of council, the last council did this, what are we going to get this year? You know, it needs to be something tangible that they can hold in their hands and say, council is committed to this, to this goal. I mean, is y'all in agreement?
Yeah.
Instead of just part of a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, I agree with that. And that's why I've mentioned in the past about the need to have the academy as part of this whole poverty issue that the council's looking to address. Because if you, if you don't have any basis for what you're doing, then you're just sort of swinging at things and making it appear. And I think we have the resources to make more of a concerted effort to make sure that we are reaching those, the goals that we have in mind and not just labeling things. And I think that's where we'd be greatly informed by the academy on this whole poverty. But this is a poverty issue.
Thank you. This scatter plot that you actually see here, this is currently where our employees are represented. Again, our lowest salary is $17,794. And if you notice here, you'll see that the majority of them, none of them actually exceed this $30,000 threshold. And again, it represents 216 employees. Some of the positions that are represented here, some of them are going to be our custodians, some are going to be equipment operators, number-one dispatchers, some administrative positions, and some museum services represent some laborers.
What's the impact on the benefits?
Impact on the benefits as far as?
Yeah, the additional, any additional costs there?
Is there a cost for us to move them to?
Well, and different benefits, retirement down the road, I'm thinking down the road. There's got to be some impact there, I would think.
It's going to impact the retirement.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just saying, I think we should know that.
They are in, all of these employees are in the Virginia Retirement Fund?
Yes, I would say almost, I would say almost all of them, Dr. Pat.
They would have to be, if they're full-time.
Put that on your list of questions to address. That's a good point.
All right.
After we, if we implement the proposed living wage adjustment as we described, you'll actually see the representation of how the employees actually move further down. After this proposed implementation, we'll have approximately 45 employees, 45 of the 215 employees, who will be above the $30,000 threshold. Our lowest salary will be about $19,988. Currently, I'd say our living wage statistics, excuse me, currently, you see our mean, our median in our mode. If we go with the proposed changes as we discussed, that include the general wage increase along with the living wage adjustment, you can actually see where we are making some strides in our average. Our average is going to increase about, approximately about 1,958. And our median, which represents our middle value in our salaries, with 1794 being the lowest, increases by about 1,662.
I have a question. On the, this very issue, the 216 employees, if they meet the employment criteria, do they get the 2.5 and the 500?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, they do.
Turning your attention to public safety, one of our compensation goals in our fiscal year 2018 budget is to be able to attract qualified candidates and retain our existing ones. In order to accomplish this, we are proposing an increase to our entry-level salaries for our sworn public safety. This includes entry level as recruits and also the salary they would get upon graduation from the academy. When we do our general wage increases for public safety, those increases will range from 2.5 percent to approximately 10 percent. This is due to the fact that we're going to be accounting for the increase in our entry-level salaries, so that we move people further down the line and don't create anything that we would call compression in that regards. Currently, we are, as it stands now, as you can see by this chart, we actually have the lowest salaries for recruit. We're approximately about $3,000 below the market average. And also, if you see, upon graduation, again, we are still below our market average there as far as it relates to the academy graduation. If we implement the proposed increases, what our goal is to do is to get us from being pretty much last in our market, but moving us more so into the middle ground, which I think will help us greatly with attracting qualified candidates in that regards. Public safety is one of, one of the areas where all of the cities, we're all competing for the same applicant pool.
So the, the number of vacancies in the public safety position, how many vacancies are there now, and how is that accounted for in the budget?
Right now, in PAFR, there are 39. And in police, there are 30.
30.
And so does this budget account for filling all of those vacancies?
I'm not saying we're going to fill all of them right there in this time. You have to keep in mind, as we recruit, we might be able to get them in, I'm not going to say it's going to happen all within this fiscal year as far as our recruitment efforts.
Well, the question I'm asking, though, does the budget account for 30 positions being filled?
What it account for? With?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Does the budget for sworn public safety with these vacancies, does it, does it account for filling all of these positions?
It accounts for filling all of them, but we budget some vacancy, natural turnover and natural vacancies in our positions, especially in public safety, because we know we're not going to fill everything tomorrow.
Right. So what I'm asking, when we look at the budget, this including these 30 positions for police?
They're in there.
Okay. So now, how many positions are filled within a year going through the academy?
No, it takes 18 months to get them through. So none, none are finished in a year. We have 12 who on May 3 will graduate from the academy and start about a year to 13 months, getting to the point where they will become sworn police officers.
Can we get the figure for how much the total 69 fully funded positions within the budget accounts for?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question. This is, this is about our paramedics. It's more of a retention rather than a pay raise. They're not, I wasn't even aware of this, but our paramedics are not considered public safety personnel to the extent that we have a paramedic riding an ambulance with a firefighter, and God forbid, something happens and there's a crash, and we have two fatalities. The paramedics don't qualify for line-of-duty death from the state. And the cost to get this, it's $567.37 a year. We have, currently have 16 medics in that position. It would only cost $9,077.92. And according to this, it's something that council, we could either have ordinance or resolution to title them public safety and pay this amount, and then they would fall under the Line of Duty Death Act. Is that something that we could address?
I would ask, Mr. Clark, that you give us an opportunity to study this so that we can bet it fully and come back to council with information of what your question is.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Casey?
Before we get started, we're going to discuss the retiree.
Mrs. Dutton.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to.
Yes, sir.
Before we leave employees, the issue as far as also other vacancies that? Before we leave employees, the issue as far as also other vacancies that, I believe I asked at the last meeting, the vacancies that are funded in the budget and how much that represents, you know, when we will get that information.
Yes. We put in a 5% vacancy savings to cover the cost of a 2.5% increase, the living wage adjustment and the public safety compression. And so, that is under non-departmental in your budget book. And I want to say it's $2.9 million in there. You will see that as salary. And I can look that up very quickly if you.
Are these the vacant but funded positions?
This is to fund vacant positions for, to assume that we will have vacancies in all our departments.
But currently, as we sit here tonight, how many vacant but funded positions do we have?
I don't know that right off the top of my head because it changes every day as we hire or as people, as people resign. But we can get that for you.
19-31, 18-31.
31. Okay. So, the allowance for salary savings is 2.681, about $2.7 million for vacancy savings.
That's under non-departmental?
Under non-departmental.
18-31.
18-31.
Okay.
Fourth line down.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Chair, members of city council, I will review for your information again, the main proposed FY 2018 fee and rate changes. Please see the handout for your reference and it's also in your inbox. Many of the rate changes are to sustain the services provided to citizens and align with state regulations. As the largest enterprise fund, public utilities is a critical service for residents and businesses. The budget team, along with the city's financial consultant, reviewed the rates needed to cover the expense of operating this important service. Aging infrastructure and increased maintenance costs, expanding regulation and revenue uncertainties contribute to the need to increase rates annually. Because of the issuance of revenue bonds for outstanding and future CIP projects and a recurring rate adjustment will be needed annually. A positive growing revenue stream to obtain solid revenue bond ratings and interest for investors to purchase the city's revenue bonds is critical. Many cities have an automatic annual rate adjustment to cover known requirements. It is important to remember that public utilities also has not had a rate adjustment since FY 2012, which is a factor in the size of the increase. Portsmouth has the second lowest average rate and we have included a 5% increase to cover a modest future CIP. Currently, the city has a consultant conducting a review of operation procedures and creating a revenue model to determine ways to create service improvements to improve routing and vehicle usage, to recommend code revisions to modernize service, reduce costs, and also studying the post 2018 SIPSA model, which is ongoing. For waste management services, the city currently has the highest rate in the region. We have included in the city manager's budget, a rate decrease of $6 by monthly. Stormwater's function is twofold, to address flooding and improve water quality. The city's rate is mid-range with the other regional cities. And as we work to address aging infrastructure and flooding issues, funding is needed for these projects. We are proposing a $1.25 per ERU rate for FY 2018. As the MS4 permit programming plan is revised, the number will be updated. This rate will increase the bill from $9.25 to $10.50, a $1.25 increase. The majority of the increase will be used for CIP projects, but it will also fund new positions. One environmental coordinator, one inspector, and one mosquito control technician. This rate has not been increased since FY 2013. For parking, as part of the budget and in order to help offset increasing costs, monthly parking fees are being increased by 5%. Depending on the garage, that would have a $2 to $4 impact on the customer.
What's the current monthly parking fee for our garages now?
It varies.
I didn't hear you. Yes, we can get you a chart on all the garages and what the costs are.
I suspect we're cheap.
We are.
We'll get that for you first thing in the morning.
Would you get that?
I'll look it down in detail, the monthly parkers and the daily parkers.
I pay $85 a month to park in the garage in Norfolk.
How much?
$85 a month.
Eight-five.
Okay, we'll get those rates for you. Pay to park in the garage that's connected to, to the hotel, to the Marriott, Main Street.
We can, we can get that for you.
And again, the, the parking rates have not been increased since 2013. So that concludes my review of the fee and rate changes. So if you have any questions, I'll answer that.
So, based on this, there's, we're expecting a net increase of about $1.3 million once you add and subtract out the waste management piece. Now, the waste management piece, how valid is that depending on the, where we all with SIPSA?
We have, we have had the consultants, which they have sent a draft back last week to vet that. And they are in align with the $3 decrease by monthly, which is the $6. So we have had those consultants to validate that.
Not, not tonight, obviously, but I think, I would like to see an update on where we stand with SIPSA and their, and the contract.
Okay.
So, does, does 1 cent on the dollar still represent a 600,000, 1 cent increase?
700,000.
700,000.
But that is for general fund. These are enterprise fund rates, so you can't really add them all up because waste management fees go to pay for waste management services, utilities fees go to pay for utility services. So, while it's a total impact on the budget overall, you really have to be careful when you start talking about enterprise funds. You can't just add them, that you can't use savings and waste management to offset utilities.
But these are funds that citizens are paying.
Of course.
Right, right. So, I'm just saying, it's just the equivalent of almost a $2 tax increase for the citizens.
Yes. But some of them are volume based, some of them are for businesses versus residential.
There is.
And we do have in the budget book a rate table of all the different rates for the city. And I'm not sure if that has every single parking garage in there, but it should have, have some of them on there that have been changed.
All right, if you go to 3-21, you will see the rate change table for the parking garages in our city. 3-21. I also must call to your attention, or I feel it is my duty to call to your attention, that the parking fees for city employees that are in this parking garage or any parking garage are subsidized by city's funds.
In our garage here.
And that's something that started back.
Mr. McCoy.
C.W. McCoy, so you remember you were here. So I just want you to know that.
It should be.
Yeah.
To be as close to free as you can get it. I mean, she had to pay to come to work.
Yep.
I do, but don't mean everybody else.
When you said you paid 45, I didn't want you to come back and say, hey, Doc, you didn't tell me.
$85 plus a toll.
Okay. All right, all right. Good, we're finished. All right, Mrs. Keller.
You can do it. You can. All right. I have one change for this, Vice Mayor, or Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Chair, city council members. We're going to talk about fund balance and net position overview and we'll get into answering some of the questions along the way. Our fund balance policy requires unassigned fund balance to equal or exceed 15% of budgeted general fund revenue. So, left out the word unassigned there. The FY 18 proposed revenue is $239 million. 15% of that is $35,856. On, on page 3-14 in the budget book is a chart regarding our fund balance for each of our funds or net position. Net position is assets minus liabilities for enterprise funds versus fund balance, which are the governmental funds.
State that page.
Excuse me? 3-14. So, to get to Councilmember Whitaker's question, total governmental fund, we make an estimate of where we are now, where we will end in FY 17 and where we will end in FY 18. And the total fund balance, projected fund balance at the end of 2018 will be $51,602. 15% of that, or 15% of our general fund revenue is about $35 million. So that gives us about 17 or 18 million dollars above our 15%. It is important, though, to remember with fund balance, that's a one-time use. Once it's gone, it's gone. And one of our major strengths in our city, when we talk to rating agencies or when we go to borrow money, is that we do have a nice size fund balance. You want to use fund balance judiciously. You want to also make sure your fixed costs are low, your debt is low. And so, if you, if you don't have those, if you have a high tax rate, having a nice size fund balance also offsets some of those, those things that might be considered disadvantages. So, as we talk about fund balance, we try to have a policy that equals or exceeds 15%.
So, question. So about how much interest do we earn off of these fund balances?
We earn interest on our cash that's available. The city treasurer invests that. And typically, right now, we're not earning very much, it's about 1%. We have in our budget for FY 18, I want to say 75,000 of interest income for the general fund. Now, some of our cash is public utilities and waste management, so the interest will go to different funds.
That was that discussion we had with the treasurer.
Couple of weeks ago. Yes.
Now, does that earn interest go back to the general fund or?
It goes back to the fund where the cash is. So if the cash is from public utilities, we post the cash to that. So, we estimate in FY 18, we'll make about $450,000 in interest, of which about 125 to 150 will be general fund. Most of our cash is public utilities.
Okay, so the fund balance, any interest earned there, would go back into that?
It goes back to the fund where the cash is. Yes.
So, can I ask you, you just mentioned the $450,000 figure, you mentioned the $75,000 figure.
FY 17 is about 450. We are not borrowing much money this next, we haven't borrowed any money this year. We don't plan on borrowing any money until the end of the spring. So as we use our cash, we'll have less and less cash to invest. We're very conservative in our budgeting because right now, interest rates are so low that we don't know what they'll be. Hopefully, they'll go up higher and we'll, we'll be able to say, all right, our interest will be a little bit more, but we budgeted about 75,000.
One question. So, is there an alert or something that let us know if we're getting close to getting to below the 15% or?
We monitor that and we, we look at that during our budget season and during our audit. I'm sorry?
I said you're the alarm.
I'm the alarm. We do look at our cash balances once a month. So we do double check and make sure we have a cash flow out for three or four years, but we double check that every month to see how much money is in our bank.
We're actually in good shape for what the, what National League of Cities recommends. We're right, we're right there with, you know, with 16, 17, what?
I had 17%, because you said the 16.67, I put the 16.67. So 2 divided by 12 is 16.67. So, what, what best practice, GFOA, National League of City, for enterprise funds, they recommend you have two to three months of operating expenses. And that is depending on the type of fund you have. And so, with waste management, with stormwater, two to three months of ongoing operating expenses is about 16 to 25% of your operating expenses. When you have a very capital intensive or a very critical service like public utilities that will have revenue bonds, that has a lot of outstanding CIP projects, you want that to be a little bit higher. And especially that we plan on issuing revenue bonds, we're going to be required to have some debt reserves, so we wanted that, that reserve to be a little bit higher.
So, so when we had to strengthen the retirement accounts, when there was an issue with the funding of the retirement, we went into the general fund to get those funds?
We issued debt, actually.
Okay.
So we issued $170 million worth of debt. And so, our debt service expense every year is $11 million for those bonds. So that does affect fund balance eventually, but we didn't go in and pull money out of fund balance for that.
Couldn't do that.
That I know of, we might have done.
We weren't here, but you wouldn't have done that.
Okay. For FY 18, we have budgeted and we proposed $5.8 million of use of the fund balance that we have, 3.9 for one-time CIP projects, 150,000 for the zoning ordinance that is a one-time use. We have a transportation initiative of 100,000 in our operating budget and that is to cover the cost of engineering and planning studies we might need to take for the Hampton Roads Transportation Action Committee. If there's issues that come up, Portsmouth might need to have some studies done. So we set aside 100,000 for that in our budget to be funded out of fund balance.
This is totally off topic, but when you said study, it popped in my head. I forget it. We had, we had a downtown study going on for, I think the ADA was, was hunching.
ADA?
ADA. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
That should be done by now, can we?
It is, I'm taking a deep breath. You're, you're talking about the downtown.
Hotel.
Hotel, yeah, hotel. It's a study.
Yes. That is in its final draft form after having, having it sent back to the consultants at least four times for strengthening what they had sent in the first place. So their final draft is with the, with the economic development director and the planning director, and it should be coming forward. But there has been an issue and Mr. Ammons has been involved with the consultants who were selected to conduct this study. So, we will be bringing back what they have and I'm pushing for sooner rather than later because it was started before I came to town and that was a year and something ago. Okay?
Sorry, I just.
No, that's okay. No, it's okay.
We've definitely been marshaling it.
Another use for fund balances that we have, the bonuses of $1,088,000. That bonus also includes FICA tax, so sometimes when you're doing the calculation, that might be part of the, the reason the calculation goes a little bit differently. We've also put in a retirement supplement of 503, 500. That'll be a $500 supplement for retirees. And at this point, I'd like to answer the question about the half of the GWI. So, half of the amount for the GWI for retirees would be an increase to the actuarially determined contribution to our pension of $350,000. So a supplement of $500 is 503, 500. Half of the GWI would be 350 for the rest of the life of the plan. This would also, as part of the cost, you also have to consider other things that happen. When you increase the GWI for retirees, you're also increasing the fixed costs of the city. You're also impacting the funding level of the retirement fund. And one of the things that we thought was a one-time supplement would provide more than a 1.25% increase for any employee, any city retiree whose pension is less than $40,000, of which 75% of our retirees are earning under $40,000 in their pensions annuity. So, while. So while the supplement is slightly higher this year, of 503 versus 350, that 350 has other implications to the retirement system, including increasing the actuarially determined contribution from here on in, as well as the potential for the funding status of the retirement system. One of the things that many pension plans are looking at is, there's three things that affect the retirement funding status. There's the mortality rate of retirees, which fortunately has been increasing for the retirees, but it does have a detrimental impact on the retirement status, funding status. There's also the investment earnings that you can earn on your trust fund, and then, obviously, the benefits you provide retirees. And so the thing that's most in control from a governing body is the benefits you can provide retirees. And so many retirement systems are looking at, we need to tie our benefits to the funding status of our retirement system, and not necessarily to what employees are making because they're in different circumstances than retirees. So we have proposed putting a supplement in for retirees.
You know, while we're talking about it, just a while ago, we were talking about the living wage, and you mentioned that 75 percent of the retirees earn forty thousand or less. And some of them even try to live on $10,000. So I suspect out of that 75 percent below the forty, probably is 50 percent below the poverty level when you look at the figures. So at the last public work session, reminded us, particularly the new ones, that in the past that we've given the retirees 50 percent of what the general wage employees have got. And I don't know what people sitting around the table think of that, but that's certainly what we've done in the past. The bonus or supplement, you know, maybe it's two ways to work that, is increase the supplement, maybe, you know, is $1,000, $800. But we need to do something. We can't let people who've worked their careers for our city to try to make it on $10,000 a year. That's not right. Thoughts?
Is that net, the retirement supplement for retirees?
The retirement supplement, no, is not net. It's gross.
What would it take to make it net?
And that is an issue. You really can't do that without calculating every single retiree because every single retiree. It's not a bonus for employees, bonus, the tax law is worked differently, and you can calculate a gross and a net. For retirees, it's an annuity payment, and you have to go by what the people's taxes are taken out. There's no one size for bonuses, so it's very hard to do a gross. Now, I could tell you, when we did, I'm sorry, when we did the supplement of 556, most people got more than $500. So it was less than $50 change. There was one or two people that got $495,000 or something. There wasn't that many that made under $50.
I would be in favor of continuing to give them, you know, the retirees half of what the city employees.
And that's where I stand.
Well, and I agree with that, and the only thing is, the people that are making the least amount of money to retirees, they stand to make more from the supplement.
That's what I was saying.
So if we increase the supplement, it would pull more money in the lower incomes pockets than the 1.25 because they're making so little, 1.25 of what they're making is a very little number.
That's exactly what she just explained.
Right. She explained that. That's right.
Correct. And the other thing is, and the way she said, she also explained that this way is really the win-win for both because it costs us less later on down the road, and they get more right now. If you do it the other way, it flip-flops. They get less, and we pay more.
They get less, but what I'm agreeing with Bill's saying is possibly increasing the supplement as opposed to doing a supplement and a 1.25. If you'd increased the supplement, you'd put more money into people making the least salaries because it's a higher percentage when you look at their pay.
Needs to be increased substantially, not just 556 or whatever it takes to net that.
How many people are making $10,000?
Well, she said 75 percent are making less than 40.
Less than 40,000.
Somebody said $10,000 up there.
Mr. Moody said that, but we don't have that information. That's private information. You wouldn't know that.
I can't imagine nobody's making that little bit.
But we don't know that.
Oh, yeah. They are.
That's private information.
Right. And you don't know what other sources of funds they might have?
Retirement is a joint venture between employee, the employee, the employer, and everybody has to contribute something.
So how long have we been on the trend of just doing the half of what the city employees before we did an analysis of it right now to determine, you know, the new route that would be able to go?
I think what Mrs.
Haven't done everything.
I think what Mrs. Kelly has presented, and I'll tell you here, is the cost that has been inherited over the years to write the retirement system and in this budget every year until out 2078 right now. And that's going to extend because we have, right now, it was 65 people, but we have 63 people who have not even retired and are in this system. So if we're looking at 18.2 million a year, and that's going out to 2078 right now, anything that we do is extending the cost of the system. The bonus does not affect the system. It does put more money in the retirement's hand than the 1.2, which those who are at the end of lease money are going to get leased, those who are at the end of a higher salary are going to get more. But the bonus has equity where you're going to get that amount. And it does not hurt us in terms of our.
It doesn't provide, it's not a fixed cost.
Right. It's not a fixed cost, which hurts our financial status if we continue to extend this out and out and out.
But if you increase the, I'm sorry, but if you increase the supplement, it doesn't continue that out.
If it is the same going out, if the actuaries see that we're doing 500, 500, 500, then that says where you are doing this permanently. And so Mrs. Kelly has shared that with us. If you go beyond three years, then that's when they say, aha, you're trying to get around, and you're doing this. That's where we will get pinged. So if it is increased somewhat, if we could go back and just look to see what it is that we could do, it's not the same as the 500 that they got when you got it this past time, then it's changed. Do you see what I'm saying? We're not doing a constant same kind of thing. So I would ask Mayor if we could just kind of look at, go back, and whatever your thoughts are, because we can't answer it right now.
I would like for you to take a look at it and to see the best, you know, possible way that would help the retirees and the city to be in the best posture going forward.
Right. Okay. We can come back with that.
I think somebody asked how long we've been doing that. I think it's been at least 10 to 12 years. I remember when it was started.
But it's not, yeah, it's not a written.
And maybe.
Right. We could look and see. We'll find.
But, I mean, we're just ending this thing to get back and kind of look at it. But if we're going to do a supplement, it's got to be much greater than the $500 that's there.
We'll look and come back. Another use of fund balance, go out of the general fund now. So we have $51 million in our general fund. We are proposing using $5.8 million. If we do the same thing year after year, our fund balance goes down five years or six years. So that is, you know, fund balance is a one-time use, and so it's not there after you use it. And so one of the things, you know, we're looking at and are concerned about is how you use that fund balance. And you want to have the reserve for it, especially if you give retirees supplements, your fixed cost goes higher. If you give employees wage increases, your fixed cost goes higher. As you issue debt, your fixed cost goes higher. So as you make decisions, they affect not only this year, but long-term. And so you want to counter what you're doing. You maybe want to use some one-time costs to offset increasing your fixed costs.
You said supplement to retirees. You meant a one-time payment.
A one-time payment.
Yeah, yeah. Stipend. Didn't we say stipend? We were using the word stipend.
It's the GWI that increases.
The GWI increases the fixed costs.
And if you don't increase the ARC, then you increase the funding gap.
And I think we're naturally seeing an issue with our funding status because our mortality rates are lower.
Lower.
People are not dying as quickly as they had in the past.
So will you use this one-time 5.8 million from the general fund, that 17 million you mentioned earlier, is that?
The 17 million is after this.
Okay.
So this 5.8, so if we didn't use the 5.8, we'd have 23, 24 million.
What we're doing is parking the discussion on the retirement.
Yes. Sure. You can go on.
With the understanding that we'd like to do something, and that the better choice is not a GWI.
Amen.
But call it what you want, a supplement, a bonus. The retirees call it a bonus.
Yep. The reason we were told when we were working with, which we, you know, we got a little hands spanked when we thought we could do this outside of John Hancock, they kind of...
Well, you can't.
You can't. We can't do it outside of them, and they kind of let it be framed as a stipend and not, because you can't give retirees bonuses. They're not working.
Right.
So we want to use the language they told us.
Okay.
Go on.
All right. Another use of fund balance that we have in our budget is the use of $1 million from the stormwater fund balance for neighborhood flooding initiative. And so our stormwater fund balance is, right now, is at 2.93 million, and two months' worth of operating budget is about 1.2 million. So we felt we could use the $1 million for a flooding initiative project. Now, these are the enterprise funds, so they don't have fund balance. They have unrestricted net positions. The public utility fund is proposing a rate increase, as Mr. Casey had mentioned, and it's to cover the next five years. In doing so, we reviewed the cost of providing the services and to maintain infrastructure as well as meet federal regulations. In addition, we reviewed the $104 million of outstanding projects that we still have to fund, as well as the need and timing of debt financing. So as part of this plan, we said, let's use $6.1 million to cash finance some of the portions of the CIP, and that will reduce the need to debt financing. The estimated available net position is about 70 million, and the total project expenditure over the next five years will be 119 million. So we're talking about much larger numbers when we talk about public utilities. Our waste management fund is proposing transferring $1.7 million to cover a portion of their capital equipment expenditures that they need. It's about eight or nine refuse vehicles. Their estimated net position right now is 3.8 million, and this transfer will bring that fund's net position to 2 million, or about two months' worth of operating expenditures. We also have in the waste management fund, a $200,000 to $300,000 contingency for storms and things that might come about during the year. I think the SIPsip might be part of that, too. Information technology is an internal service fund, and we do have some fund balance in there, or some net position in there, excuse me. And so we use that to replace some computers, and that reduces their net position slightly. And then another thing that we'd like to talk about, or that we have, is we have $3 million reserved in the health insurance and OPEB fund. We have $3 million in the fund balance. What we'd like to do is have that and speak with the schools and speak with doing irrevocable trust for that. And as you do that, the ARC, it's ARC now for OPEB, it'll go to ADC because they're changing policies, but it's actuarially determined contribution. The more you have in irrevocable trust fund, the less your ADC will be that you have to fund.
Has that negotiation coming along?
I am awaiting Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm waiting to hear back from Mr. Sam Meekins at the conclusion of a meeting last week. I'm told that Mr. Meekins will get back with me with regard to where the school board is. I did not hear from him, but I think he was to return today. So hopefully, we'll hear from him in the next day or so.
All right. The next slide. Financial policies review. We have reviewed this in January or February, so we'll go through this rather quickly. On page 2-10 in your budget book is the budget overview and has the financial policies for the city. As you approve the ordinance for the budget, you're approving the financial policies. Most of our financial policies are very same, the same for every year, and I'm going to just point out one or two tweaks that we made to them. It establishes, financial policy established the framework from which we are guided on how to produce financial statements and how to determine financial practices. You're adopted by city council, and their best practices to maintain financial integrity. The areas that we have, policy areas, are revenue budget, debt management, CIP, retirement and OPEB funding, and an investment policy. The main one that we talk about all the time is being structurally balanced. Our one-time revenues only fund one-time expenditures, and our ongoing revenues fund ongoing expenditures. We have revenue diversification. We review our fees and charges, and we try to have conservative budgeting in these revenue and fees. Our budgets are structurally balanced. One thing I do want to point out, our contingency appropriation is at least 0.5 percent of budget expenditures. We do not have that right now. We're at, the city manager contingency fund is at $500,000. We did not increase that. To have a 0.5 percent contingency is $1.1 million. We felt that, while it's an important policy, we just did not have the ability to do that funding right now. We do monitor our budgets quarterly, and we will be bringing back to you next council meeting our quarterly budget report. And our fund balance is equal to or greater than 15 percent of general fund revenues. Our debt management policies are followed, that we have, we don't borrow more than 4% of our tax market value, that 10% of our debt service, our debt service is less than 10% of our general fund and school revenues, and that we pay off our debt. In 10 years, we pay off at least 50% of our debt. We're not just pushing down the road. We develop a CIP, a five-year plan, and we approve that annually. We try to enhance pay as you go, cash financing to reduce the reliance on debt financing, and we try to maintain our physical assets at an adequate level to minimize future maintenance and replacement costs. The next one, retirement and OPEB funding. We did change the policy slightly to say that we want to explore the best methods of utilizing and funding an irrevocable trust. So that is one change we did make in our policy. We didn't say we would use an irrevocable trust. That's up to council, but we did say we were exploring that this year. And then we have an investment policy review. The city treasurer has a written investment policy, in that every year, we're supposed to have an investment statement done. In FY16, really, we didn't have any investments, so we really didn't produce a report, but we will plan on reducing report this year in FY17. And are there any other questions or comments?
I have the information for you on the number of employees. There are 822 general employees and 410 public safety. And when you include the FICA for those employees, it comes to the 1.1 million.
Say those numbers, okay.
Eight twenty-two general employees. Four ten public safety.
Are those actual, are those?
Are those actual, are those positions?
Those are actual employees.
So, no, doesn't include vacancies, right?
Yes, sir.
That's it. Something else?
Question? All right. Now, reviewed what we're going to do tomorrow night again?
Tomorrow night, Mayor, is a capital improvement program project, so we will go through those thoroughly tomorrow night. In there tomorrow night, you will, although I have the information, we're talking about the flooding. In 2008, as we shared with council, a study was done on areas of which we needed to address the flooding, and up until 2011, every year, monies were put there, but after 2011, there was no money. Going back, and that plan is good, the neighborhoods of Simondsdale, Ebony Heights, Highland, Biltmore, and Brighton, South Portsmouth are addressed in that, and we'll get in more detail to that tomorrow night in CIP.
At our last meeting, that's about the breakout of the constitutional officers?
It's in front of you. It's a sheet.
What is that?
Handout.
It's a handout. I mentioned it when I was in.
Did you put the handout?
Deborah has put it out there. She didn't get one of these. I'll email it again. We can do it tomorrow or tonight.
Council members, this handout is in your box. The box.
In the box.
Computer box.
Yes.
Well, you're talking about emailing. Can we have the executive briefs emailed to us instead of delivered to our homes?
Well, you had asked for it to be delivered to your home.
No, I asked for it to be emailed.
No, you asked for it to be emailed, and the reason it wasn't emailed this past time because I was away and they just sent them out. But all of the backup information that goes with the executive brief, it's not possible for us to get all of that electronically to council, so that's why we deliver it. There are articles, there are all kinds of materials that go out to them, reports, and so that's why we prepare the package and send it out. But we'll send you.
Well, are they, they're on someone's hard drive, aren't they? This PDF format isn't?
No, we don't, they're not on the hard drive, the handouts that we have.
I was just going to ask, is it something that we can scan and send to them?
From?
Can you explore it?
I will explore it, but it's, some are total books.
Yeah.
Okay? So, I couldn't get that scanned.
Can't you scan that through the automatic document feeder?
No. Let me look at it, but it would be very difficult, Dr. Whitaker, for what we are sending out to council to have all of that sent electronically.
Well, I mean, what's sent, is it really that thick? But I would prefer it's too much accumulation of paper.
Yes, what you said.
Right.
Right. So, we're sending yours electronically.
I think Paige has got a question about the constitution.
Is it someone I, I don't want to drag this meeting out with it or make anybody else sit through it. Someone I can sit down with and I talk, what's in the budget book with the increases here, and I can determine what part of it is us, we're paying, what part of the city?
We can do that.
State.
We can do that for you.
Okay. I don't need to drag everybody, everybody might not be interested in that, but I would like to know because there may be some things we could use, better use someone.
Share the answers with everybody.
I shall. All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, this ends the presentations for this evening.
And this meeting then, we'll see each other tomorrow night.